For the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Take the roll, please.
Trustee Ben.
Here.
Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Heinz.
Here.
Yes.
Trustee Kazmarik.
Yes.
We're all here. We have public participation next this evening, and if anybody would like to approach the podium, if you have an issue or a discussion, sign in and state your name. We would like to hear from you, and this is not a question and answer. It's your opportunity as residents to propose your issues, and then somebody from the board will get back to you, or from the staff. So is there anybody that would like to come to the podium this evening? Moving on, we have a presentation on a proposed ordinance, and I'm going to ask Attorney Anderson to discuss this further.
Thank you. First, let me apologize to the board and to the public for this not being on the agenda. That was an error on our part. However, notwithstanding that, we're not asking you to take any action, really even to discuss. We're asking you to listen to a presentation by the petitioner, if you will, for this groundwater ordinance that relates to the former All Steel site, Centerpoint Properties, and they have asked for an opportunity to address you, to explain what it is that they're looking for, and give you some history regarding that. So I'm going to turn it over to them in just a moment. The only thing I would ask you to do is listen, but don't feel like you have to ask any questions at this point. We'd rather have you kind of absorb what they have to say, and then we will be able to get back to them with any concerns that you bring us either individually or as a group at some later meeting. But right now, I think the idea is for us to be educated and hear what they have to say. So with that, I would turn it over to y'all.
Good evening. My name is Laura Artis. I'm with Centerpoint Properties. There we go. We're the current owners of 900 Nell. We have a little drawing over there. The boundary is the turquoise line. The bigger orange is the groundwater ordinance area, and the little box is our property. It's on Route 31, if you're not familiar with it. Suncast is the current tenant in there right now, if that helps you visualize where it's at. We have another set of boards, if you guys would like them over here. Centerpoint Properties purchased this property in 1997 from GPI, and at the time, there were some environmental concerns and some investigations going on. And so at this time, I'd like to introduce Dwayne Wanty. He's with GPI. And then Tim Adams, he is with RUU and Associates. He's the environmental consultant. And then we have Jim Baldwin from the IEPA here, in the event you have any questions for him. So, Dwayne, I don't know, Dwayne would like to give the history of the site, you know, prior to our ownership.
Sure. Thanks, Laura. So I'm Dwayne Wanty. I'm the Director of Environmental Affairs for GPI Interim, which used to be called All Steel. And again, we're here to talk about a groundwater ordinance. We've been working very hard to clean up the site. We had an environmental issue that occurred 25 to 30 years ago, and we've been working ever since then with the Illinois Environmental Protection Agency to clean up this property. So we've expended considerable resources and man-hours and costs doing this, and at this point, we believe we're about six months away from achieving the environmental standards agreed with Illinois EPA, assuming that we have a groundwater ordinance in place. So the ordinance is a critical step in getting us to the finish line, which is defined as receiving a no further remediation letter, NFR, letter from Illinois EPA. So the ordinance obviously has a benefit for us because it's part of achieving the finish line, but we believe it also has benefits for the village in that it will allow you to continue managing the delivery of clean water to your residents without having to worry about a private individual installing their own well in that area. And the ordinance is a common tool that IEPA accepts, and it's been used by a number of other municipalities. In fact, in the information package, we've listed another, a number of other municipalities that have used that in the course of achieving closure of their environmental matters. We've given you the information package. We're not going to go through the whole thing, but we want to hit on some of those highlights and can answer questions if you want, or respond to you afterwards. So just a little history. All Steel used to manufacture office furniture at this location between 1958 and 1994, and it was in 1986 that the environmental problem was first discovered. And what we found were solvents in groundwater in one of our onsite wells. And really, immediately, we started working with Illinois EPA in 1986 and ever since then to investigate the full extent of this problem and to clean it up. And with that, I'll turn it over to Tim Adams, who's with RUU Associates, a private consultant, who's managing much of the work for us.
So again, I'll just kind of cover, in summary, the main components of the fact sheet package that we gave on proposing an area-specific groundwater use ordinance. As Laura and Dwayne mentioned, we provided a map on the board there, basically outlining the blue boundary, which is your municipal village boundary. The orange boundary set on there is a proposed area-specific groundwater use ordinance, and then the smaller orange box, again, is the area of the property at 900 Nell Road. Basically, as Dwayne outlined, there's been several investigation and remediation activities conducted at the site. We're at the point of projecting an endpoint for the remaining active remediation endpoints and goals, and then proceeding into a remedial action completion work phase, which would include, as a component, an area-specific groundwater use ordinance, and that's why we're here talking about that this evening. Again, there's many benefits of a groundwater use ordinance. It'll help ensure that the village will continue to provide safe drinking water to its village residents, which it's currently doing, and it will also, again, as Dwayne mentioned, help prevent anybody within an area-specific boundary from putting in a well without it being the village. So what we've also outlined in here is just, again, other communities that you may be familiar with, within the fact sheet package, that have already gone through the process of either a complete village-wide groundwater use ordinance for their village, or they've gone through an area-specific groundwater use ordinance, similar to what we're proposing in front today, or talking about today. We've also included in our information package model ordinances and memorandum of understanding, which the village and the IEPA then would agree and enter into to help enhance and deliver the groundwater use ordinance. Again, specific to the communities listed in the fact sheet package, they've also used the exact similar model use language that we've provided in our fact sheet. We've also included the same exhibits. Again, I'll just talk from this a little bit. This is another blow-up of that. So this is the area of the site that I mentioned. This is the property. This is the area of the ordinance. This boundary is basically developed utilizing our array of monitoring wells in the area, as well as our assessment of the vehicle transport of the contaminants that we've been monitoring and remediating. What's also shown in for reference across the Nell River boundary is the village property where existing wells 12 and well four are located, and their minimum setback zones that are appropriate for those wells. We just wanted to go over that. That information is as well in the fact sheet package. I think with that, we just wanted to turn it over to C2, if there were any general questions that we could help answer, in addition to the fact sheet.
I'm not hearing any questions, and I think this is the first that we've seen of this, and I think we'd like to look it over, and we'll get back to you at a later date. Did any rest of you have any, want any, to present anything more?
No.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for coming.
And I'd probably just close. Thanks for the opportunity to present some of the facts and the information. Again, it's kind of follow-on to some of the initial meeting and discussions that we've had previously with some of the village members as well. So again, give you a chance to review the information, and we'd be happy to answer any questions as a follow-up at a later time.
Sure, and they'll be fine, and we'll get back to you then, okay?
Thank you.
And thank you all for coming.
I'm Jim Baldwin with the IEPA. I'm the project manager, working with these guys in terms of getting the NFR letter for the former All Steel facility. It came to my attention last week that there was a letter that was sent back to the Village of Montgomery back in January 2008 that has not been replied yet, and I was to bring this forward to make sure that someone at least addresses this so that we know what type of setback zones to be looking for in this well. So I'll provide you guys with this, a copy of this letter and a booklet to be filled out, and hopefully, somebody will get back to the agency. The agency would like to know which direction to take by the village in order to progress with this no further remediation letter, okay?
Okay, well, that's fine, and if you can leave that, then...
Right. Who do I, who do I give it to?
Leave it with the clerk.
You can just give it to our clerk.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's it. And if you have any questions, feel free to contact us.
We'll get back to you. Thank you.
Nope.
Sure, no, go ahead and get your...
Go ahead.
We won't keep your...
Oh, no, you gotta leave the easel.
Yeah, that's a nice easel, but it's not ours. Okay. Thank you. Okay, well, next, we'll live to items for discussion, and the first item is the FY14 Annual Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program. And I'll turn this over to Acting Administrator Jeff Soffol.
Thank you, President Miccolini. It's my intention this evening to discuss two funds with you, the Debt Service Fund and the Police Pension Fund. The Debt Service Fund is a governmental fund type. We use it to account for payment of all non-water-related long-term debt. We currently have three outstanding bond issues in the Debt Service Fund, with principal and interest payments of approximately $1.6 million in the FY14 budget. We have the 2008 bond issue, which was one of the issues for the Village Hall construction. That one, we're paying $100,000 a year per, and through fiscal year 18, and then we have two payments of $1 million each in fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20 to pay that one off. That's after some of the other debt has come off. We have the 2010 bond issue. That was used to refund 2002 bonds, to take advantage of some interest rate savings. The original 2002 bonds were for the police station construction, and the 2010s refunded those. This bond issue runs through fiscal year 18, increases from about $1.1 million in fiscal year 14 to about $1.45 million before it matures totally. And then we have the 2011 bond issue. This was used to refund the 2005 bonds, which were the other Village Hall issue, again, to take advantage of some interest rate savings. And this issue runs through 2025, and it runs between $300,000 and $450,000 per year over that timeframe. All of these debt payments are funded through a transfer of utility tax and other funds as necessary from the CIP fund. So really, it's, you know, required payments that we need to make, and those are the three issues. The Police Pension Fund is used to account for the revenues and expenses related to our retired officers, and everything having to do with that. I assist them with preparation of the budget, but other than that, they are their own governing board, and they've recently entered into an agreement with MB Financial to handle all of their investment and accounting activity. So we do not do any accounting for them anymore. We just get monthly statements so that I can record it on our books, but they handle paying the retirees, they do all the investment sales and purchases, and take care of all the bill paying for them. So we don't really have a lot to do with that one, except for helping put the budget together for them. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about either of these two funds.
Are there any questions? Yes, because we...
Yeah, a couple. With the Debt Service Fund?
Yes.
How come it goes up every year, every other year?
Some of them are set to be sort of level debt service, and some were set to increase. Our plan was to use the utility tax to pay for them, and our utility tax, we expected to grow, which it has grown, and so we had lower payments at first, and then had it grow in accordance with how we thought the utility tax would grow. We didn't want to have level payments of $1 million and a half if our utility tax at the beginning was only $1 million, so we tried to stagger it to match up with our payment source.
So if our utility tax ever went down...
Then we'd have to...
We'd have to look.
We'd have to make up, well, we'd have to make up from other funds. That was our plan, is to try and line it up with what we thought utility tax, where the revenue would come from.
Do you have another question?
Yeah, the one is the Water Fund project for Boulder Hill.
Yes.
Would that be considered a debt service?
It would be, but it would come out of the Water Fund. Since it's a water project, it would not come in the Debt Service Fund. When we discuss the Water Fund, you'll see we have two debt issues in there right now. We have an IEPA loan, and we have a regular bond issue, and that's where it would go into water with those, because it'll be paid back from Water Funds. So we separate those two types. If it's governmental debt, or if it's debt related to the water projects, they're accounted for differently and separately.
My last other question is, if we take that out of the Water Fund, if that fund starts to go down at all, how would we repay back some of that debt? Let's say the residents, you know, they don't stop paying. Let's say they have problems with their water bill or something like that. They don't pay for a few months, and then revenue starts going down for that bond. How would we compensate for that?
Probably it'd come out of reserve, or from the money that's generated just from the regular water revenue.
All right. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have just a pretty easy question on the revenue for the Police Pension Fund. Can you explain a little bit about the property tax that we levied for that? Who sets that?
We actually hire an actuary. Each year, we send them a list of our, all of our sworn officers that are part of the Pension Fund, and based on their age and all the actuary tables they use about mortality rates, and estimates of salary increases they'll get. He puts it all together, and they come with a formula that basically tells us, here's what you need to contribute to meet your future funding requirements for the retirement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Trustee Ben?
Well, just a comment. I'm noticing that the provision for conferences and training is only $1,000. While I'm not anxious to spend more money, I'm wondering if that is a very frugal number.
And I would leave that to the chief. I know they usually go to the, some of them go to the IPPFA.
That is correct. Usually, one of us on the board will attend that conference, and it will cover that cost, though Illinois has implemented a few more education requirements, so we might go over that this year, because we have a new pension board member that will have to attend a 32-hour class, so... But normally, that will work every year for us.
Any other questions?
I have one question, to go back to the water system in Boulder Hill. There's going to be a dedicated source of revenue for that, to repay that, based on the increased rates that are going to be charged...
Correct.
...to that area out there. So that kind of follows the general, I guess you could say, philosophy that we've had, where development pays for itself, so here's a situation where redevelopment is going to pay basically for itself there, too. So it's not that the rest of the village is going to be funding that project out there, it's that it's going to be funded with the increased rates to the people that are benefiting.
That is correct.
Are there any other questions? Good questions?
And Monday's meeting, we'll be discussing the general fund.
Okay. Moving on, the next item is the Economic Development Update, and I'll defer this to your Assistant, Amy Ludovic.
Thank you, everybody. Tonight, you will actually be getting a joint presentation with myself and our Executive Director of the Economic Development Corporation, Charlene Colom Fiore. So, thank you. This is not, okay, I think we're good. So tonight, we're in front of you because you told us that economic development was a top priority, and we set out to kind of look at what a cooperative economic development strategy for the village would look like. The purpose is because, because it's a top priority, we're going to kind of go through what, how we see economic development in the village, what it is, and kind of step back and look at the roles and who's doing it. And then later on, I'll talk a little bit about, you gave specific direction to create an incentive policy to me. So tonight, I'm going to go over just my quick synopsis of economic development, cooperative economic development, what it is. Shar's going to get up and talk to you a little bit about the MEDC and the significance and the role they play in economic development, and then I'm going to come back and kind of hit you with the next steps and the things to think about. So when I talk about cooperative economic development, I'm really talking about the village working together with the MEDC and the businesses, and then also other organizations like the Chamber and the news media outlets, and everybody that would come together to make economic development happen in the community. So cooperative economic development is really just making sure that we're all, you know, working together to accomplish things. So this is my vision for economic development in the Village of Montgomery. Shar and I spent some time on this, and what you'll see here is that business, you know, everything kind of starts at the top with business development and retention of our existing businesses. The majority of expanded growth actually comes from businesses already in the community. And then kind of this attraction and attainment element, which is, that's the marketing, that's what you think of with the recruiting new businesses and going out and bringing them into the community. The fulfillment is kind of where we start to see the cross, where we close the deal. The cash, this is all, this is the village. This is when we talk about tools and incentives that are used to bring them in. And this is the services that we provide, police services, public works, water, planning and zoning, code enforcement. I would throw our business bonding, things we do at the village to make the environment strong for businesses. And I have this divided because I kind of see it currently as this side of the line here, the retention and the attraction, as the part that currently our MEDC takes the lead on, and we sort of provide support to that function, and vice versa, the areas that the village should be working on to provide support for the MEDC. And so, you know, we're taking the lead on this side of the fence, and we work together to kind of make economic development happen. So with that, I'm going to ask Shar to come in and kind of talk about the business retention and attraction.
Thank you, Jamie. I had a slight engineering problem with my EEI water glass. Has it slowly poured on the side of me? So forgive me for that. So there is Amy's chart, and how development is on the top, and I believe, let's see. What I wanted to cover had to do with a little bit about the history and the background of the MEDC, some of our major functions, which, as Jamie pointed out, were primarily retention and attraction, and then also a little bit about building relationships, public relations, marketing, communication. Now, when I mention inventory on there, inventory includes not only available land, available property, but also available assets throughout the village. So that would include you, and all of us, and village staff, and many of the wonderful things that Montgomery has to offer. Towards the end, I'll talk a little bit about the accomplishments. So as a background, we were founded in 2003. This year, we'll be celebrating our 10th year in business, and we are planning a really nice party the end of April, April 30th. We hope that you'll all be able to attend. It'll be a great opportunity to meet with the local businesses and the investors in the community, as well as mingle with the players in the community as well. We are governed not only by the village board, but also our executive board, and our primary goals, again, we want to attract and retain the businesses that we have here. We like to work with the current businesses and address both large and small issues, and help promote the village in a very positive light. Our benefit, often to the community, is very difficult to measure. However, through increased employment, payroll, tax revenue, and business volume, I think that it shows that the MEDC's value is quite relevant. We also serve as a tax revenue generator, and we work really hard at enhancing the business climate environment. We do a lot behind the scenes, both building relationships externally and internally. I just put a few here that include workforce. Workforce is very crucial to any retailer, or any industrial operation, or business, or even a site selector wanting to know what type of businesses and what type of labor we have to support their business. We also have strong relationships with realtors and developers. They help close the deals and help bring people like Sam's and the many businesses that we do work with. We also work on a regional level with the EDCs and the landowners as well. Some of the state agencies help bring bonds or other funding resources for us. There, I just put a snapshot of the MEDC webpage that kind of lists some of the resources that we have available throughout the community. Marketing is huge for the MEDC. We work really hard on setting a positive, you know, a positive feel for the community. We do as much as we can on the marketing side. There's a few ads and a few advertisements that we try to get into, some of the relocation magazines. One of our big success stories this year was the Deals on Wheels. Communities like Hinkley and Elgin, and even as far as Plano and Sandwich, Sugar Grove, all called and asked, you know, how we pulled that together, what was the success of that. And I know at the time, we had about five vacant properties that are now filled. So I'd like to share that success with all of you and the village who worked really hard as a partner with us in creating that. Social media is kind of a big one as well. We continue to network through that venue and do a lot through Facebook and what we can. Northern Real Estate Magazine has been a good friend to us. We've been published throughout the year, and in December, I think we had four articles or photos and listings in there. On the communication side, again, this is another area that's very difficult to measure in the sense that, you know, our communication works with the business owners, as well as the committee that's involved. The roundtable through the BCEC Committee has done quite a lot. As you know, they were, we spent, I think, over 100 letters were sent out in support of the Orchard Road Construction Project, and helped bring that to fruition, which now is really very positive. We worked with a few of the players in the Stewart Sports Complex... We worked with a few of the players in the Stewart Sports Complex, had several roundtable discussions to get that to close as well, which, again, in the next year or two, will be a great opportunity for the entire region. We work very hard with as many taxing bodies as we can. We just recently had a meeting with the village and the fire department on issues as it pertained to the Tiff District. So again, communication is a high priority. Back again towards inventory, I talked about vacant land, working with the developers, posting the data on Lois, making sure that we have an understanding of what our buildings are, what our current vacancy rates are, what the cost of those are, as well as trying to help the people market those properties. I listed those two logos there in particular because it was a kind of a success story, I believe, for the MEDC, and it shows how partnerships work together. That 2001 Baseline Road was a project that was, the project was originally owned by IDI, and we worked with Stag Industrial for about four or five months, and it was through the help of Caterpillar and some of the people within Caterpillar that helped close that deal. And what that ended up resulting in was another eight acres that now IDI can develop. And as they build one or two small spec buildings, perhaps then we can get them to look at Orchard Road or Ocot Road is another option. Fox River Foods, as everybody knows, was sold, but we did a lot of work over the course of the last couple of years with Fox River Foods, from, you know, signing SSAs and giving the village permission to go on their land, the list and the relationships with the different companies within Montgomery is one of the things that the MEDC does very well. It also brings opportunities to the community as well as investment. Now, here, I just highlighted, you know, a few of, you know, some of the major accomplishments, and as most of them were mentioned, from infrastructure to communication, advertising. Number three, business friendly was something that actually this board and staff has worked with us on accomplishing, and one of the things that, to me, is so exciting is how very well we not only do business friendly well, we're being well-known for it. As in the case, when I got here and said hello to Sam's, they said how great we were and how wonderful we were to do business. And that says a lot for what we've done over the course of the last couple of years. And it's also, we're kind of a cheerleader. You know, we go around and let people know how hard we work on that. Retention, I named a few. Ridge was a big one. They were originally on Cornell. They recently purchased a building off of Ocot. Again, Fox River's on there, IDI. Now, here is something that I was asked to do. Jamie had said, Char, if you had a wish list, or if there were things that were holding you back, you know, can you just let us know some of the things that perhaps, you know, we could help in a way, you know, if you had additional funds, where would you put these funds and what could we see, you know, happen with these funds? So that's basically what this particular list is. It's not set in stone, but it's some areas that we've had to cut back on, you know, due to, you know, loss of funding and so on. And so it was, you know, an area that we were hoping to increase dollars and do more with what we have. So with that, I'd like to turn it back over to Jamie.
Thanks, Char. Char will be here, too, for questions at the end. So just to hit on this, I think some of you may have seen this. This is the FY 2014 budget proposition to increase funding to the MEDC $20,000. I believe that right now, the MEDC is our leader of our retention and attraction efforts. It's one of the things that they're tasked with in what they do. They're the only people doing that currently or doing it well. I mean, we help a little bit, but, you know, certainly not something the village is focused on. And so the way that I believe to really improve our economic development, if that is a priority, is to give it more resources. So that's sort of, you know, the first pitch tonight, is that if you want to do economic development, we consider giving more resources to the development and attraction, in this case, in the form of $20,000 to the MEDC. The second thought to leave you with tonight is sort of what the village is going to do for economic development according to this vision and this plan, which is going to be, first, to continue to provide support to the MEDC. Under the service kind of category, there are quite a few things in our plan that I've presented previously that we're going to focus on related to some of our business bonding efforts. Now with our comprehensive plan and some redevelopment initiatives and economic development planning, a major factor in that, as well as with the fulfillment and the cash, making sure that we have the toolkit available to close deals that we need to. And this is something that the board asked for, the incentive policy, and really having that discussion about where and when we can apply appropriate tools to bring businesses into the community. We're already doing tax rebates in certain scenarios, but it would really help in our vision to have a good understanding of what it is we're trying to accomplish. So kind of my closing thoughts for you and the point of this presentation is, first, to let you know that I will be initiating some steps in the upcoming months to sit down and go through discussions about incentives and sort of what we feel is appropriate economic development tools. And then, second, to leave you thinking about the fact that if you want to increase resources for economic development, the proposed budget includes an increase of $20,000 to the MEDC for business retention and attraction. Other resources, and basically that comes in the form of time, it's either time or money to this function. So with that, I'd be happy, Char, too, to answer any questions that the board has about economic development or how we're seeing our cooperative economic development in this community.
Are there questions for either Char or Jamie? Questions? No questions?
A couple.
Okay, we have a couple.
To clarify.
You're not off the hook here. Go ahead, Stan.
I have a sheet that appears to be similar to the slide that indicated how we would arrive at a $20,000. Can you help me understand, we have an item for advertisements in the form of $5,000 and other marketing for $1,000. So we got, could you expand on that area for us a little bit?
There are, there's a series of different ways that you can advertise, obviously through the media, different forms of site selection magazines, and also activities. So that would include, you know, perhaps the air show. I know the ICSC is listed as a separate item, which is geared specifically towards the trades as well as retail. But there are other shows out there as well that can be utilized, like a plastic show or a medical show. Part of those things are still yet to be determined, and that's part of the direction that Jamie was looking to get into, was what are some of the areas that you would like to see us put effort into adding to our marketing efforts? So again, it could be listings, it could be magazines, it could be advertising, it could be activities. Those were just a couple samples that we thought we would put in there as far as, you know, things that we could use for marketing.
Now, it would be helpful for me, for comparison's sake, to see an overview budget like this of how the funds from the MEDC were spent for this last fiscal year. If my fellow board members would be interested in that as well, I don't think that we've really seen that.
Absolutely. We can provide a copy of the MEDC's budget.
And that would be all to the, to all the board members?
Yes, please.
Okay. Any other questions?
There was a reference to business retention for Gusto Packing. Could you expand on that a bit?
Basically, that was a purchase. It wasn't really, I look at it as a retention because they didn't leave the area. Plus, with the acquisition of Butterball, that company is going to grow. So I don't know all of the details as far as how far it'll grow, but I do know that there's about four officer positions that they're in the process of seeking. So I look at Gusto as a retention project because they're a company who's growing and are staying in the region, and they became attractive. That's why they were purchased by Butterball.
Could you go back to that slide, please?
Sure. That one or the one?
The one that enumerated, there we go. I thought so. It's under a slide called accomplishments. What would have been our accomplishment in that regard?
It's the communication that we have with Gusto and the relationship that we have with Gusto. They're one of our founding members.
Let me say, Char, that Gusto was one of our first, was the first one that gave us the money, gave us $5,000, has given us $5,000 all 10 years. They're going to probably expand, at least it's in their plans, to expand right on their site around there. They've talked to me a couple of times about how some of the other businesses might sell because they want the land around them to stay here. And then Gusto, at the same time, Butterball has now owned them since December, but just recently sent a $5,000 check from Butterball to the MEDC for one of, to be a member again. So it's not like they've got bought out and then decided, nah, we don't know who these, we don't know who Montgomery is, we're not going to, we don't have to give them $5,000. The original owners really liked Montgomery and came here from Aurora, and Butterball looked at the whole situation, too, and likes the help that Char gave the family and liked Montgomery. So I think that shows that they're going to be here a while and that they like the MEDC, or they wouldn't have gave us $5,000 for this coming year.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. I think this was very thorough. I appreciate.
Thank you.
Breakdown, your presentation. The next item is Plan Commission Recommendations, and this is Jamie, I believe, Jamie and Jared?
The Plan Commission is going to briefly summarize the results of the last mission meeting.
Great.
Before the news this evening are two items that the Plan Commission has recommended for you tonight. The first one is, is Plan Commission Item 2013-001, which is a special use, a site plan and a final plat for Sam's West, Inc. They are proposing to build a Sam's Club at this property here with a gas station facility here at this location. Now, for your reference, this is Route 34, and this is Route 30. Goodwin Drive comes along behind it, as well as J.C. Penney, et cetera. Just a couple snapshots of the plan. The Plan Commission did recommend several deviations to the zoning ordinance that was requested by Sam's. One of those items was the distance between parking islands. Our current ordinance requires 15 spaces, or no more than 15 spaces between parking islands. They're proposing more than that, which staff and the Plan Commission have recommended approval of based on congruence with the adjacent lots. The same is true with the streetlights, or, excuse me, the parking lot lights. They are taller than the village standard, and once again, that is to match the existing lights that are already out there at the shopping center. And the last major deviation was the rear yard setback. The zoning ordinance requires 20 feet in the rear yard. The petitioner is showing 15 feet. The petitioner has landscaped, more heavily landscaped that area to facilitate the narrowing of that rear yard setback. A few more pictures. And then we also would like to just touch briefly on the elevations. Staff and the petitioner have worked closely together to, on the elevations. We have staff requested some minor changes to the elevations, such as a little less EPIS, the use of EPIS, and a little more use of stone and CMU, large, excuse me, large block product. And the petitioner was amiable to that, as you can see before you this evening. Staff also worked with the petitioner on a number of other minor items to bring in this plan. Now, there are only a very, wow, sorry. There are just a very few minor items left there, including a couple of planning items and a couple of engineering items, that the petitioner has indicated that they're amiable to those items preliminarily, and we look forward to addressing those and, you know, finishing out the plans. With that, the Plan Commission voted seven to zero to approve this project, this special use and final plat, with one added condition, which was just that a pedestrian connection be made from the J.C. Penney's into the proposed Sam's Club. With that, I would ask if you have any questions about this project. And the petitioner is here this evening as well, if you have any questions of them.
Is there any questions?
Could you go back to the site plan and show where that pedestrian connection would be?
Let me see if I can get a little larger. There we go. I apologize, this is a little small for accurate viewing, but the J.C. Penney's building is actually about right here, and they have a sidewalk that would dead-end into a landscape island. So the Plan Commission looked at this and recommended carrying that through, carrying that sidewalk through, and then marking the drive aisles appropriately to get pedestrians who would potentially be interested in walking from J.C. Penney or other sites to the, I guess, northeast to the Sam's Club.
How big was the concern that that pedestrian connection be there?
The entire Plan Commission agreed on the connection. The petitioner agreed at the night of the meeting that that would not be an issue.
Would that essentially come down to paint on the pavement, dedicating a walkway, or what?
It'd be some paint on the pavement. It would also most likely mean, and I haven't looked into this exclusively, but it appears that would also mean some sidewalk in the landscape islands.
The only reason I bring it up is just the practicality. I mean, realistically, would you park in one lot and walk across to the building in the other? Just a thought. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of, would the petitioners like to say anything? No comments, or? We're not finding a lot of, yes, Danny?
I got a question. I appreciate the extra brick because we've always had that in past development, too, and it gives you, down the road, a better look to it. Question on the gas station. How many pumps or how many cars can be serviced? It said like six stations or?
Yeah, that is correct. There are six pumps. I believe that they are both dual in capacity, so it'd be 12.
Is there, is there a possible room for expansion? Are you planning that or not really? Gas is getting up about five bucks for kind of getting.
Good evening. My name is Bernasa McQueen. I'm with Manhard Consulting. We're the civil engineers for the project. To my knowledge, Sam's at this time does not have any intentions for expanding it. Yeah, I just wanted, oh, sorry.
Sorry, backwards.
Wrong direction. I think we have. Wrong direction. I think we have room, there we go. I think we have room, their standard, standard layout is the six pump layout. Occasionally, they will do an eight pump layout. So I think we have room if in the future they wanted to add two additional pumps, but I don't think at this point they're considering going to the eight pump option.
Okay, thank you.
I have an additional question then. Would there be an attendant on duty there?
Yes, there's a small kiosk that is manned. The, the kiosk does not provide any additional sales. There are no.
Right. I've seen these new things, like up at Woodman's where, I think it was Thornton's put in a gas station, but there's no attendant there. It's just, I guess, self-serve and credit card only, I would imagine. I haven't been in there myself, but that's the first I've seen of that. But you are going to have an attendant?
Yes, there will be an employee at the kiosk at the station.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, trustee Rowley?
Yeah, I just have a few questions. Do you know approximately how many jobs will be created by this? I have a few questions about that.
We, our preliminary is that the average store is roughly 170.
Another few questions. The, I know in this area, a number of years ago when the library went up, we had RTU screening requirements. And looking on the back of this elevation, I know we can definitely see the rooftop units. Is that, does this meet our current ordinance?
That is one item that staff has worked with the consultant closely on. Initially, the consultant had a much lower parapet wall. We did have them elevate that. There are a few quite large units that do just, just poke above that wall yet. Due to the expansion of the wall, staff and the Plan Commission have recommended approval of it.
That would be my only concern, that we held our library district to that. And I could see that becoming an issue. The only other comment would be, I've actually sketched a few comments about pedestrian access that trustee Keck mentioned, that I passed along to Jared before the meeting, just about pedestrian access on Goodwin and throughout the site for clarification. So I'm glad to have Sam's in the community. Thank you.
Yes, we're very happy to have Sam's in the community. And I, I think that everything that you've presented is, looks great to us. And so we're, we're very pleased.
Great, thank you. As, as they mentioned earlier, we do commend staff. It has been very easy working with staff.
Wonderful. We're, we're always happy to hear that, too. So, okay, thank you very much for coming out on this cold, cold night, too, to talk to us. So if there are no more questions, okay, then thank you for coming. And Jared, you can move into, so there's two items.
Yes, thank you. The second item before you this evening is a special use proposal for a planned unit development as well as outdoor use and service. Now, the proposal includes these two parcels, one, excuse me, 109 and 111 North River Street. This is River Street. This is where we are this evening at the Village Hall. Shar's office is right next door here. And then this is Webster Street. So the proposal is currently this area is zoned Mill District. And in the Mill District, you are not able to, after, excuse me, well, it gets a little interesting because we get into the nonconformance portion of the ordinance, which speaks about parcels being vacant for a certain amount of time, and then the desire for having them filled again. Well, after they're vacant for a certain amount of time, they have to conform with the zoning ordinance, and hence the Mill District. The Mill District does not allow residential on the first floor. It allows residential above commercial space when being brought into conformance. The proposal before you this evening is that 111 North River Street be used as residential, 109 North River be used as commercial, and then also that a can, outdoor use of canoe slash kayak rental occur behind the two units behind this garage. Staff recommended denial of it due to our regulatory plans referencing them. However, the Plan Commission, by a vote of five to two, recommended approval of this planned unit development and special use, and cited several recommended restrictions on it. The first recommended restriction was that the area to, excuse me, the unit to be used as residential only be allowed to be used as residential for a maximum of 10 years. So therefore, the goal in this is so that hopefully in 10 years, the business climate will have picked up, and we are still able to implement the different plans, such as the transit oriented development plan. Second item would be that screening be placed along Webster Street, screening for residents to the south, so that they would not have to look at the outdoor use of canoes, kayaks, which are also being proposed as being stored outside. The zoning ordinance currently states that a fence in a corner side yard, and this would be considered the corner side yard due to the street here, only be three foot if it is not, excuse me, if you cannot see through it, if it's board on board, and four foot if it's more of a picket style. Now, in reviewing this, staff is recommending, due to the recommendation of screening, staff is recommending a six foot high fence for two reasons. First of all, it is staff's opinion that a three to four foot high fence really defeats the purpose of screening. And second, that ordinance is really meant so that you do not have a fence, a tall fence, blocking your view of the corner. Now, as you can see, the building is already on the lot line. Therefore, therefore, staff does not believe that a fence located back in this area for screening would impede a driver's view. With that, I guess I would ask if there are any questions.
Where's the parking going to be?
The Mill District currently envisions on-street parking. There are several parking spaces right here, as well as spaces along, on the street.
Does the petitioner?
Oh, go ahead.
Sorry. Does the petitioner envision outdoor lighting in the, particularly in the back area? Have they discussed that?
The petitioner is here this evening. That is not a question I posed. It was not proposed. Would you like them to address?
Please, yes.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is James Eason, and my wife and I are the petitioners for this property. We do not have any plans for any outdoor lighting behind the property at this time.
Okay, and did you have another question, Stan, or?
I think I would like to either incorporate that into the agreement or specify a highly downcast form of lighting should a decision ever be made to have lighting, to avoid distraction to the neighboring properties.
Absolutely.
And parking was my other concern, but I defer that to the Plan Commission.
Trustee Keck, I know you had a question.
Couple of questions. Just what trustee Bond was saying about the parking. Do you envision people parking there, renting a canoe or whatever, and then going to the river, and then coming back two, three hours later, or what?
Yes, sir. That, our initial plan involves mini trips where they park, and they take off in the river, and then we come and pick them up.
Are you envisioning then a path down to the river with a launch pad?
Well, the way the property is right now, where, where we're going to build the fence on Webster Street, we're probably going to do a gate of some sort that provides access from the, the main area to the back down that way.
Okay, and if we're talking a six foot fence, would that be high enough to accommodate or screen whatever your storage, I assume you're talking storage racks of some kind?
That is correct, yes.
How tall would those be?
Well, in this case, they would definitely be manufactured to be less than six feet. So that they would, so the six foot fence would definitely shield all, everything that's associated with.
Because the first thing that comes to mind for me is if you have a yellow canoe, you flip the thing upside down, or kayak or whatever, flip it upside down and put it on the rack, do you see the yellow bottom of that thing sticking above the fence?
Sure. We, we would make sure that it didn't. I mean, any visibility above the fence would defeat the purpose of screening in the first place. So we would definitely ensure that it doesn't go above the fence.
How many boats would you envision having on the property?
Oh, that's a good question. In the beginning, we're going to start small, maybe five to 10. And hopefully, as the business grows, we anticipate more on-site.
Do you own the property now?
We currently have the property under contract with a scheduled closing date of March 7.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Yes, Stan?
The shoreline of the river itself, whose property is that, and what issues might we encounter with regard to preservation of the shoreline?
The actual, the, the private property that we have actually includes, I believe, 26 or 36 feet of river frontage. I don't know specifically with regards to environmental issues or what's going to be involved. I, I don't believe we need any special permits as long as we don't build any structures on the water, which is not part of the plan. But I don't know specifically if there's anything that we need to address. I don't believe so, to be honest, but I need to do some more research.
Yes, trustee Rowley?
Yeah, I just have a couple of things. I think this is a great reuse for two existing buildings that have been vacant for a number of years. So I appreciate you guys coming to us with this creativity. The one comment that I would make with regards to screening, I do agree with Plan Commission that the storage should be screened, but I think that that's it. I don't think that taking a six foot high fence from the back of that, from the corner of the garage all the way down as far as you can, would be advantageous, especially if you're trying to run a business and get people to park their cars along Webster and walk down into that. So my, my opinion would be that you screen your storage, but otherwise not screen the use. There's people going to be putting kayaks in the water. I mean, I think that's a great use to show off. So that's my opinion.
I actually, I think that's a good idea, to build a fence. We're, we're actually kind of hoping to build a fence to the guardrail where it ends. And I believe that that amount of screening, right where, right where Webster Street ends at the terminus, I believe that would provide adequate screening. I don't think we need to go all the way down to the river.
If I may, in addition to that, there is a little flood plain back here. A little bit more engineering may be involved to, to determine exactly where the flood plain is. However, they would not be allowed to build a fence in the flood plain.
Any other questions? Yes?
What are you going to do in the winter time?
In the winter time, we're going to not run a canoe business. It's a seasonal business, and I don't really have any specific plans for the kayak and canoe business in the winter time.
Another question. You aren't, you aren't the business that was across the river in the gas station, are you?
No, sir.
Okay, because there was a boat rental, or canoe, or kayak rental, or something over there some years back?
Yeah, I did a little bit of research on them, and they were, they had a art studio and a coffee shop and a bunch of other.
There was a number of things in there. Because I had received a fair amount of feedback from local residents that were very, you know, disappointed when that business closed because the beautiful amenity of what we have here of the river, you know, and then business like that was very complimentary, to say the least. And then I, for one, and I'm sure the rest of the trustees share, my enthusiasm for you bringing this project in here. It's a good project.
I appreciate that, and we're excited also.
Just on the winter question, they do intend to lease out the commercial building in addition to this business, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And you, you each have businesses also on, is it a real estate or something that?
I'm a, I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I run a real estate brokerage in the city, Chicago downtown.
Okay.
So the intention is to lease the commercial building to a fully separate entity for downtown.
So you're looking at this as a speculative, depend, depending upon the economy and, and where that's going and so on?
Absolutely. I mean, in a perfect world, we'd love to redevelop that property in accordance with any of your transit orientated plans and anything like that, absolutely.
So I, no, I'm thrilled that, you know, that you're coming in there, and we won't have that built, vacant buildings. And, and I think you have some good ideas. So any other questions or comments for the board members?
Good.
While they're doing that, I will just make one comment about a conversation planner Chipman and I had following the Plan Commission meeting, was that our Plan Commission did an excellent job on both of these cases, talking through, bringing their expertise to the floor with regards to engineering and landscaping, and, and talking about these same things. So, you know, they brought these recommendations to you, and, and we feel good about the discussions that they had, and then the discussions that you had.
And then that will be on the agenda, I presume, for Monday night. Is that correct? Okay, thank you very much for coming, and I think we all have a good idea of what your, your plan will be. And then on Monday night, we, during our meeting, we, we will be doing an official vote, okay? So with that, we'll move on to department updates, and I'll defer to Jeff.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chief Myers.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a couple of things. The Kendall County Police Officer Respect for Law banquet is March 9. If you're interested, please contact Kathy Pregel for tickets. The deadline is March, I believe, March 4. I have nominated Officer Greg Mayhew for a life-saving award. Back in the summer, he, he performed CPR on a resident out in the west sub, west side of the police department. I can't remember the street right off the top of my head, but he did a very nice job and saved that gentleman's life. Number two, Annette Seawi, she started last Monday, February 11th, the same day we received the waiver from the Illinois Training Standards Board approving her waiver, so she does not have to go to the academy. She does have to complete a firearms and a law for police 40-hour class to be certified. So I will put her on the agenda for March to be sworn in, so you'll meet her that night. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, the Boulder Hill Water Main Project Open House is this Thursday, 7:00, 8:30 PM at Boulder Hill Elementary School. Pete Wallers, myself, some of Pete's staff will all be there. You're all welcome to attend. We're hoping for a good turnout, and our goal is really to share information with anyone interested in the project, but particularly those people that are most affected by it, the Boulder Hill residents. So we'll talk about the scope of the project, the costs, what some of the construction plans are, et cetera. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of people there. Excuse me. As a sidebar today, Julie Morrison and I met with us, Weegaland Park District. They have the Civic Center down on Ashland, so one of their big concerns is the pool operation. So we're working with them to coordinate our efforts. I found out today they need water to run a pool, so it was good to know for the planning. They also do some daycare and some other programs there, so we're going to work with them closely to try to minimize interference to their projects. You'll see on the next Monday's board agenda, we'll have items on the basin maintenance, which we talked about last week. Also, bring to you a recommendation for award of a landscape maintenance contract. That's for all the mowing and landscape buffer maintenance. So that'll be before you next Monday. And we'll also be asking you for approval on Clark mosquito control. I'm just trying to get ahead of the game on that. We're not into mosquito season quite yet, although it's been a warm winter. And lastly, just hopefully amusing, we're about to put in our first order for salt for the year. So we had a greatly reduced quantity to order this year, but we're finally getting into it. So once we get through Thursday's storm, if it comes through as predicted, we'll probably have to order a few truckloads. So that I take any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Really quick, we are working with Houssil Levine on an agreement for comprehensive planning services, that we hope to have the agreement before you, the first meeting in March. So we're meeting with them on Monday. If you have comments, please get them to Jared prior to that. Thank you.
What time is that meeting Monday? You're meeting with them?
Uh, it's in the morning, I believe.
Oh, you're, you're down.
Just, yeah, just at the staff level. So we're hoping to have comments. Just, yeah, just at the staff level, so we're hoping to have comments from the board at that, by that time.
Thanks, Jamie. That's, that's it, okay. Is there any newer unfinished business to come before the board this evening?
I just got one on the Jefferson project for Mr. Kennedy. Has anybody got back to him yet and we're gonna, cause I know we discussed that.
About the auto flusher?
Not the auto flusher, just his, his B-box or something. We're gonna look into it.
I don't know what we've done with, has there been any more contact?
We had sent him a letter several months ago regarding his request for reimbursement on the filters and there was some discussion about long-term and short-term improvements we can make or steps we could take to minimize the problem. I wasn't aware that there were any other questions to be answered.
Yeah, we discussed that we were gonna try and dig up his water main or his lawn to see what was the problem was maybe.
I mean, that was brought up by.
Okay.
A trustee, but we didn't have, that's not a discussion we'd had publicly about doing anything.
Okay.
There you have it. So we can discuss that further and maybe I would be, I did get his number and I didn't get a hold of him, but I meant to call. Okay. Any other, any other newer unfinished business? Anybody else? Nope, okay. Moving down, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Second?
Well, the second, I'll take the roll, please.
Trustee Lee.
Yeah.
Trustee Hines.
Yeah.
Trustee Rowley.
Yes.
Trustee Keck.
Yes.
Trustee Kesmeyer.
Yes.
Yeah, we are adjourned and it's a cool, cold evening, so go home and keep warm.